I will call to order the planning commission for the city of San Clemente Wednesday, May 22, 2024. At 5:00 PM, we are starting a study session tonight. We have four commissioners present. Three are missing. Davis is missing, Camp is missing, and Prescott Lefler is missing. We have a single item tonight for review, which is the San Clemente sidewalk program. So we'll have a discussion about the city's program for sidewalks and other things about that regarding code and design considerations. And we're really lucky tonight to have the city's assistant engineer, Zach Ponson, here with us. And we have Christopher Wright here as well with Jonathan Lightfoot, our city planner. So, Mr. Ponson, I'll give it to you. Thank you for preparing this material and being here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Crossgrove and fellow commissioners. I'm Zach Ponson, your assistant city engineer. Sounds like today we were directed to kind of provide a roundtable-type discussion regarding our sidewalk policy. And some of the main topics I heard on the request were how did we get here? How did we get such a hodgepodge nature of sidewalks, especially in that southwest area of the city? And how do we get sidewalk? And how can we make it a little bit more cohesive? So tonight, I do have some PowerPoint presentation in front of us. I have a lot of slides for code that I wasn't going to bring up in case some questions came up particularly regarding code or the general plan or some of our other guideline documents. So really, on the presentation, I just got a lot of slides. And so I'm going to kind of start with the, what I thought was the nature of what triggered this. I had a conversation with Commissioner Davis regarding the southwest area of San Clemente and why it's such a hodgepodge of historic tile, new tile, different types of new tile, red concrete, gray concrete, and stamped red concrete. And so that area does see a very wide variety of materials out there. And by all means, as a roundtable, interrupt, ask questions, that's what we're here for. And that's kind of the format I saw that you requested because it is such a large subject that I could talk for hours on it.
Let's make it interactive and casual.
Yeah. And by all means, if I get over something and you want me to rewind, that's fine, too. And like I said, this is a big enough subject that we could talk all night and probably still keep going type of thing. So just, I'll real quickly start off with just kind of the ways we obtain sidewalk. There are grant opportunities through our CDBG federal grant. Avenue de Cabrillo is a good example, where we got a grant opportunity from the federal government, and it was to put in some sidewalk along a continuous whole block. And so with grant opportunities, you can get things like safe routes to school. You can get the CDBG, which this was downtown, and we were trying to connect the library and the community center to other transit opportunities. And so with that grant, we were able to fill the gaps on one side of the street on just Avenue de Cabrillo. Other ways we can get sidewalk is through our state and county gas tax funds, our SB1, M2, and there's a newer one, the state has RMRA. Those, we use a lot for our asphalt pavement preservation, though. And so there are a lot of them are meant for the street rehabs, but we can use them for other things. But in order to keep those funds coming, we have to keep a certain score in terms of our pavement management. So a lot of those funds go towards the asphalt. And what you'll find out as I talk is putting a whole block of sidewalk on a street, very expensive. And so the city and a lot of other cities have, our third way of getting sidewalk is through building permits. City of San Clemente, we trigger it at $50,000. If you don't have sidewalk, we require you to put it in. If you are discretionary and you didn't have enough easement to deal with a sidewalk, we add a condition of approval to dedicate that sidewalk easement. And we could talk about that. I know we've talked about it at several hearings in the past. But if you want to get into that, let me know to have the code available for that. But some of the other ways we can get it, similar to Marblehead or even Ralph's, where they redeveloped their whole frontage, but Marblehead gave us a whole community of sidewalk. You put that on the developer, they give you the whole community, whether it's private streets or public, it's usually open to the public to traverse even those private streets. And then there's new sidewalk construction through CIP projects. And these are kind of projects that aren't associated with those gas tax funds. Very few, you know, the funding for those, you haven't seen a lot of those projects come through this general fund to go put sidewalk somewhere. In general, most of our areas, we do have sidewalk, but west of the five, we are missing, it's very, there's a lot of void of sidewalk west of the five in those older areas. If the city to fund that, usually we'd be coming out of our general fund. And so then you're competing with other projects and other types of things in those budget decisions. And so with that, with talking to Commissioner Davis, the general questions he had was regarding the kind of the southwest area. And our code references the exhibit I have up, it's called Exhibit A. And what this was done, and Chris can give us some background on it, in 2006, about they surveyed the city, and most of these areas that had the black shading in there on the streets had original tiles still from the 1920s when the streets were created. And so 1926 to 1935, a lot of these tracks were developed, and Ole Hansen and the contractors put in B of A, put in a lot of what we call the Ole Hansen pavers sidewalks. The map was done to kind of designate areas that generally have it. But as you can see, the southwest area is just one big block of, you know, black shading. That does not indicate that every house in there has tile, obviously. It was every other house, every fourth house, and you couldn't physically put that many dots on the exhibit, is my understanding. So they simply shaded the whole area. You'll notice on El Camino Real, there's just a few areas where literally there's just a dot. That means one property still has its tile. And all those other areas on El Camino Real don't have tile. And so it is very inconsistent in terms of the tile. And that was one of the things that Commissioner Davis had, you know, kind of said, well, why isn't all of southwest a tile area? I'm going to kind of come back to it's a cost issue. And our code kind of gets into when you replace tile in these areas that are shown in black, you have to replace it with tile. If it is tile, you replace it with tile, is the way I kind of shortly put the code. If you don't have sidewalk in these shaded black areas, and you have to put in sidewalk, then you have to put in tile sidewalk. So for example, the city right now is out on Caie Toledo. There's a couple gaps out there that we're filling with a city project. And we caught it, it was a last-minute decision to fill those gaps because we had some funding. And we said, oh, wait, timeout, that has to be tile. So that, just this week, we're putting in tile sidewalk out of an area that didn't have sidewalk at all. So we're following our code, saying we're following this exhibit, and this is where we're going to put the tile because the code tells us to. So we have two different types of new tile that we allow into town. On the left, you'll kind of see what is terra tile, very uniform, kind of, I often get complaints that it looks like something that belongs in your kitchen. And then after that one was created, the one on the right, Ardo brick tile was created to give it a little bit more variety, to try to make it look like the historic tile. So this is a good example of two different houses that probably did remodels. Their drive approaches were destroyed just over the decades, and that's common of that old tile. And they had to replace it. And it's up to them to pick which one they get to use. This is at the corner of Cadiz. I always liked this photo because on the left is the original tile. The middle, you see the terra tile, a little tiny section of still historic tile. And then the corner is all the new Ardo. So in one location, you can kind of see it all. I believe right out of the photo to the left, there's even stamped red concrete, which I think they did in the late 60s and 70s, they started allowing. As I said, the drive approaches on the old tile are very suspect to the vehicular loading. So you get these areas where people are, once they do a building remodel, over 50,000, they have to replace this. Since it's tile, they're in that black shaded area, they have to replace it with tile. And that's kind of the after effect of one of these drive approaches. But you can see that hodgepodge inconsistent manner of this photo. On the far left, you got red concrete, which apparently was allowed in the, I'm going to guess, 60s, 70s, 80s, and possibly 90s even, up till the 2000s. You got, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but to the left of the driveway approach, somebody did a curb core. And just that one little trench is a good example of, they let them backfill it with red concrete. And this was probably done decades ago, but it would have been very hard to kind of replace that with tile for just a little small trench. And so you start seeing the nature of these things fade at different colors. They don't always look the same. And then a lot of areas, it was so damaged that the city just decades ago didn't have these same codes, allowed people just to rip it up completely and put in red concrete. Or they were done in city projects, I'm not exactly sure. The red concrete, a lot of times, has died through with the mix. In this case, I thought it was a good photo just because it's clearly a surface-applied red. So when they grind it off a trip hazard, you can see a nice gray band of, you know, the underlying concrete there. So it's just something else that leads to that typical hodgepodge nature of the sidewalk types. Something else, throughout the other areas of the city, Chris and I went through our guidelines, just to kind of summarize what a lot of the documents say. Our design guidelines from 1991 talk about El Camino Real. It talks about a lot of the zoning guidelines of what to do with mixed-use homes and courtyards and things like that. But there's also a section in that 1991 document that talks about sidewalk should be either 10 or 12 foot wide on El Camino Real. It shall be gray, and it shall have a red tile clay border. And so this is down at the South El Camino area. It never even made it into our engineering standards, but they did enforce it on about a handful of properties in new developments. Just recently, probably around 2015, this restaurant came in just north of Carl's Jr. What did we, we tried to follow the code and say, okay, now you're putting in this red band and gray concrete, because that's what the design guidelines said, and it's because that's what the neighboring property had. So we were trying to create a consistency, at least, as we went through that and following the documents we had for us. But as you go up and down El Camino Real over time, another new development that came in, this area had tile. So the condition was they replaced the entire 10 homes with tile. So just in that area of town, you have a code that says, replace, if it's tile, replace it with tile. But then also a design guideline that says if it's not tile, go gray with a brick border. And so it's very inconsistent, even in our documents, of telling us how to do this. And, you know, with the slides, I didn't want to get carried away with a lot of photos, or what to do around town. What we're trying to do now in El Camino Real, council, it was somewhat informal, but did direct engineering staff to stop using red concrete on El Camino Real. I thought I had a photo in here, but the Tommy's before it got demoed, it's probably still out there. Previous Public Works Director took that, I think, a little too literally. Tommy's was all red concrete. They had to do some sidewalk trip repairs before their project, and they had to do some utility work. Next thing you know, there was a one-foot strip of gray concrete, a square gray concrete over here, a square gray concrete over here. And to me, I don't think that was the intent of what council wanted. So with new staff coming in, I kind of said we should never do that again. And kind of, the new Public Works Director agreed with me. And we agreed that, in speaking with even the old Public Works Director, there was a reason why they removed this tile band. It was starting to pop in a lot of areas, and so it became a trip hazard. So a lot of the great, the red band that you see on the screen was becoming a hazard. So the Public Works Director, it was my understanding, several, a decade or two ago, said, we shouldn't put the red band out there, it's just a hazard. So it never made it into our standards. We didn't, with the exception of this one property, we didn't, we just started going with gray concrete. So the Valencia Corner with all three developments will all be gray concrete. And that was just per council's direction of no longer use red. But we also didn't have a code that says they shall use tile. And so all of those three are just going to use straight gray concrete. But that kind of leads us to that hodgepodge nature of these things. And we could talk about the types of sidewalk or how we got here, but reality is, it's very expensive to take out a whole block, let alone a whole city, and start making things consistent. The tile itself, or the Ardo brick and the terra tile, my understanding, it's 30-plus dollars a square foot. And that doesn't include the demo, I believe, of what you had to remove. And so you could be looking at 40-plus dollars a square foot. So a 40-foot frontage, you're looking at $7,000 to potentially put in tile. And so we have not been saying, you do a $50,000 remodel, you have to rip out your perfectly good red concrete and replace it with tile. Because 7,000 of 50,000, you're talking 15% of somebody's budget on something they were not planning. So it's never been staff's direction or practice to rip out sidewalk that is ADA compliant, just to put in tile. So it kind of has, I think, echoed back through the past few decades. And Chris was able to find our general plan that talks about being consistent with the, sidewalk should be consistent with the district that they're in. It doesn't get into specifics of what districts, it doesn't say, the T-zone shall be interlocking pavers, North Beach is interlocking pavers, and Del Mar Base Pier Bowl is all tile. So it doesn't get into those. And so then there's not a master plan for the sidewalks of what things should be. And that's something that is, if there is somewhere for improvement, it would be nice to kind of have that master plan. And there's opportunities out there with getting potential grants to look at our sidewalk and inventorying it to at least see what it is and where's the areas we could focus on. Personally, I think we've already kind of established a plan in town. North Beach up to Miramar is interlocking pavers. The top of the T-zone is interlocking pavers. The bottom of the T-zone and the J that goes down and hits Del Mar, the pier, is all tile. And El Camino Real in between is a pretty hodgepodge area, but with council's direction, I think we've been given direction to go with just straight concrete. I do have one new developer who's doing two duplexes on South El Camino Real. I do believe, I think we said, show it as this, and he can apply for a change or an interpretation to see what the city manager really wants us to do with that. Because he wants to be able to, could do something a little different. And so with that, we're able to talk about codes or anything else, or even the condition of approval that we often talk about on our projects.
Well, that's very interesting. I think we'll just go down the line and let people ask questions. And you'll lead us off, Mr. Crandall?
Right now, the only neighborhood that has consistent across the distance of, say, a particular house is El Camino at the Surf Zone, in front of, what is it, Surf Riders Homes. The unique thing about that is, there's no curb cuts or driveways that cross that sidewalk. And one of the big problems with the tiles and all has been, they don't survive at a garage apron. They struggle. And I got to assume originally, I mean, now we're getting into weird pavers that aren't historic, they're just something different. We can't duplicate the true historic look. Those tiles are unavailable, and if they get damaged, you're out of luck. Is it strictly the historic society that's trying to keep red sidewalks? Or, I mean, it's got to be able to be duplicated, it's got to be consistent, it's got to be available. And we'll have more uniform sidewalks if it's reasonably priced. You can see where I'm headed with this argument is, does it change the character of the city to have concrete sidewalks? Now, maybe the edging's fine, something like that, but I'm thinking the whole reason it was done was to try to stay historic, or it hasn't. That hasn't worked. They tried to go to red concrete. You can't duplicate faded red concrete with new red concrete. It just doesn't work. So throw it out there as one option of, if we said, forget this and let's get reasonable about it and go concrete, but try to get it where there's no patchwork repairs. If we can get the sidewalks with maybe five-foot or six-foot, um, expansion joints and say, when you cut through it, you replace that whole section. So we don't have patches and holes and whatnot, uh, that's the practical approach. Now emotionally, there, there may be another approach that's, uh, people wanna go, but that would seem like the reasonable economical, it can be duplicated, uh, it's available. If everybody does it, great. I mean, if you wanted to say, hey, at historic homes, um, if the city wants to go in with that particular, I don't have a problem, it might be a good notification that that is a historic home. And don't try to do the whole damn street.
And, and that's something that has come up in the past and something that Chris could maybe talk to is the, the tile itself, the Ole Hansen original tile. Uh, Chris could correct me if I'm wrong, was designated as a historic resource. And so they came up with a whole action plan to create a replica tile in the event that it had to be replaced. Um, and so removing it out of there, I don't know, Chris could maybe echo what that would entail. But keep in mind that, that Tommy's site, so if you're not doing a whole frontage and somebody is all red concrete, and I, I apologize for not having the photo, but I can possibly, you guys can see my screen right now?
Uh, no.
No, no screenshot.
I'm gonna jump to Google Street View just to kinda show you that one, so the, um, so you can kinda see it from the above view here, that they were fixing some trip hazards and had to replace several panels. And I think the city actually did it with our city project, but it ended up with a very hot, even worse looking sidewalk, to be perfectly honest, so. You know, my thought is, we wouldn't do this again, I don't think that was council's direction was, it's more like, you know, the Top Toon side or the Valencia building, if you're gonna replace it all, you replace it all with one color, and it's, they wanted gray on, um, bless you, on, uh, El Camino Real.
Just south of that, right there. Is it red all the way across?
So it was, it was red with, I think it got into some gray over here. They ended up reporing it all as gray. And so it's gray all the way up to the, the ADA ramp at the, at the freeway. And just to be consistent and, and per that direction at council. I don't know if they changed the code, or I'm not even sure if they actually passed a resolution to do that, but it was council's direction to stop using the red up there. But, um, I kinda warned a few people of this, like, hey, this is gonna happen. And I think it happened with, you know, the very first one was just a little utility trench right here, and all of a sudden it, um, I apologize, but there's always gonna be too many cars on this street, probably. So there was a, a need for a repair right here due to that trip hazard you kinda see. And so that first patch came in and, you know, you end up with this one big blotch of white concrete. And so it's tough to, if you, if your goal is trying to get rid of that hodgepodge nature of it all, and then to me, it's if the whole frontage has to go, or then you're replacing it all with one color or, or something like that. And if that's the goal, try to be more consistent. But keep in mind, that's the tough thing, is we're a hundred-year-old city almost, right? And so if we were a brand-new city, it's easy. We could create a district, reach, be beautiful. Replacing it after the fact is, especially one home at a time or one remodel at a time, is gonna still be a, a mismatch and checkerboard of different materials out there. And, and you could be talking decades, if not way longer, just to see a truer impact. And the other alternative is coming in and just redoing it all, and that's where your cost is just extraordinary. Grants included, I just don't know of a grant out there. I think it took us two and a half years of CDBG funds just to get a half a block of Cabrillo. Granted, it was tile, um, but in tiles, pretty expensive, especially at prevailing wage. But it, uh, it, it's something that's, it's a hard hit on homeowners. Even just doing some of these things or replacing their drive approaches to make them ADA compliant is a ten thousand dollar, fifteen thousand dollar job to them when they weren't expecting it. It's, and I have to hear it, it's, it, it's a common theme of the ADA compliance upgrades alone is a big hit on people, let alone if they had to rip out red concrete just because it's red to go all tile or all gray or something like that. I, I, I'd imagine you'd be hearing a pretty big feedback on that from most people. So it's a tough subject for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, and who knows how we did, like I said, there's so many different things that they allowed. They were literally stamping red concrete just to make it kinda look like the tiles. And, but like you said, they're failing, but it's usually the historic tile that's failing. Uh, the new tile, we actually set on a four-inch reinforced section at drive approaches. Commercial drive approaches, I believe it's six-inch reinforced concrete with the tile on top. And then the tile now is so strong that it's,
Yeah.
it should be fine. It's just.
But they, they end up paying for a sidewalk and tile, they build them both.
And even that, it's a reinforced one, cause most sidewalks not reinforced if it's just gray concrete. And so you end up with a extra-strong sidewalk with a whole nother layer above it, so that's why you start looking into the forty doll, thirty to forty dollars a square foot.
Yeah, I've always wondered if there's a way to get, share in the cost. And, uh, you know, rather than, if you get a grant, share the cost with the homeowners as they come in to do these things, hey, we'll, um, split the difference or whatever, um, to get it uniform.
We had a program for a while that did do a fifty-fifty share program, and it was really just to address trip hazards, not even ADA compliance, just to address trip hazards. The, the costs of even just managing that program, um, I think we spent more than fifty percent of the budget just on staff time. And so staff's looking at right now a potential upgrade to that policy and code to recommend likely even eliminating the, the fifty-fifty, cause it's just not cost-effective when you're spending half of it. Cause you have to get send three formal notices, you have to potentially put a lien on somebody's property, and then it could be somebody who's an out-of-the-state or even out-of-country owner that you're dealing with, or a retiree on a fixed budget, who now has to do a deed restriction on their home, the lawyer fees if they don't pay. The program itself was, we, some cities do a hundred percent homeowner, some cities do a hundred percent, um, city. And s- very few did the fifty-fifty, and we chose to do the fifty-fifty back, back around two thousand thirteen, I believe. And it's just, it's become a very tedious process in terms of the cost. To the point where it's a lot more effective just to go out and put that hundred and fifty thousand straight onto our asphalt project, put the hundred and fifty out there, and while you're doing the street, just hit the sidewalk at the same time. So it's much more cost-effective for us to, to get that sidewalk repair program included with our streets. And then it's not so much dealing with the homeowners and disappointing them at the same time. So there's some pluses and minuses to it, for sure. Uh, state highway code actually says that trip hazards in the public sidewalk belong to the name, the adjacent property owner. Something I didn't know until I got here, so if somebody trips in front of your house, they're supposed to sue you, not the city. But, um, it's most surprising to most homeowners, and once they hear that, they kinda say, okay, well now I'm in, here's my half the money type of thing, if they can afford it. So the fifty-fifty is really was just to address hazards. But something like coming into a block and saying, hey, we're gonna do an assessment district to restore your area, that would be almost the only way to do it. With the, with the homeowners involved.
Can I jump in on the cost issue? If someone wants to replace their drive approach or sidewalk, private party in front of their home, it's all cracked up, you guys condition it as part of a remodel. They have to pull a permit, right, encroachment permit? And to have to have like a Class A licensed guy do it?
Class A or C-eight concrete, yeah.
Right, so, my opinion is, you know, it could be done way more cost-effectively. Pouring four-inch sidewalk is not rocket science. And the guy's probably, if he's pouring his slab, doing addition, he's doing some onsite flatwork, whatever, could super-easily replace the, the concrete at a much better price than hiring a Class A or a Class C-eight contractor to come out and do that little bit. So it would seem to me like if, if, you know, I'm sure there's some legal issues that the city attorney would need to work out, right? But, so, you know, as long as it's inspected, right, hey, it's pre-inspected, it's four-inch deep, it's been compacted, whatever. It, the, the cost could come down significantly if we didn't put that burden on people. And in doing that, you might see more of it turn over and get better, and there'd be less trip hazard and stuff like that.
Well, it's an interesting question or comment, cause most of the time, it probably is done by the person when they have extra foundation concrete, and it's, hey, let's form this up as we go in. So if they're, they're thinking of it ahead of time, you gotta pour in your backyard for a footing, don't just pour it in the concrete bin over there in the trash, have your sidewalk form ready to go. And most contractors are all pulling their encroachment permits, and they'll list a C-eight or somebody else on there. And half these people doing the work already know somebody. And as long as the name on the permit is the C-eight license, then we're protected from insurance and liability standpoint. It could very well be the person out there doing the job, though, that is not the C-eight physically doing the work, and they've called their buddy and said, hey, you're, you're my engineer, or you're my contractor on this one.
Well, but probably in most cases, people doing the remodels are, are Class B licensed, they're not A or C-eight. So they're gonna, you know, it's a Class B, he's having his own guy pour the slab, or he's got his concrete sub or whatever, but the C-eight is not on the permit.
The problem with that, though, is there's a state licensing board that governs what certain people can do. So B-licensed people physically can't pour public work, project, shit, concrete. So it's list every license on there, if you go to the state website, there's pipeline, there's, so we have a whole list of who can pull certain permits. And that's consistent throughout all the cities, cause we're following that license, licensing board regulations, saying what they can and can't do. So I don't know if the city legally should, I think our attorney would possibly wanna chime in, but could legally go in and start saying, well, we're gonna be less restrictive than state requirements. Especially if something were to ever happen on that sidewalk, then they're gonna always point to that. So it's, I think it's a good idea, I think in practice, I think it is already happening. Most people out there who are doing a big enough project to trigger this, know somebody who's a C-eight or, or that who's willing to just go, I trust you, let me come, I'll check your forms for five minutes and you go ahead and pour it, and then it was me. And so I have a feeling most people are probably already doing that. I haven't heard a lot of complaints of that aspect of it, other than, why do we have to fix the sidewalk and not so much the cost? And the, the drive approaches are the toughest part, especially at the tile areas. Cause that, you, you need almost a masonry-type specialty. And that does get pretty elaborate, you gotta reinforce, you got a certain, um, expansion joint, uh, material we require in there. And so in the public right of way, though, the, the contractor's code does, uh, line item what people, certain people can do. And the B contractor can sub out. Uh, so they can pull the permit, but they have to tell us who's doing the work, is my understanding. It's been a while since I've actually issued permits, but, uh, that was my understanding a while back. As long as they tell us who it is and we list that person, so a lot of times it's just, give me a name, and that B's pulling the permit for him, though. So, okay, yeah.
Well, the, the only mismatch really is in like the non-HOA areas, cause where there are public streets, meaning maintained by the city of San Clemente, um, west of the, or east of the freeway, which is largely HOA, that's all gray. I don't know of any place that I can think of right off the top of my hand that has anything other than gray concrete.
Right, in terms of different material, it's really El Camino Real and the southwest area that I showed before on the, uh, the PowerPoint. So those areas that were shaded in black on that exhibit are where they, they found old tile. And over the past decades, they've just, they've tried a, you know, mismatch of different ideas to try to mimic it, right? And, um, and now we've, now we're seeing the results of that, though.
I can understand maybe the pier bowl, but even that is a lot of gray and, you know, Del Mar, but I don't know, El Camino has such little, and I'm not really so hot on keeping tile in the residential areas, cause that, what makes the historical thing is the homes that may show up that have the, I don't particularly look at the sidewalks.
Yeah, the pier bowl, the pier bowl, sorry, Chris, real quick, the pier bowl itself, the city did do a project, so the, it's not, it was done after this map was created. So if this map was redone, you would see, cause from that termination at Seville, the city did come in and, maybe not at Seville, but right below it at the loop there, uh, the city did come in and put, uh, pavers down all the way down through the, the bottom and past.
Cause I see Cabrillo's on in that, that's kinda odd that that, I would've thought it would've been on Del Mar, but Del Mar's not even dark.
Yeah. Yeah, so for some reason, they went down Cabrillo, but not, you know, any of the other streets.
Some ways the dark, the black streets kinda create, create a problem.
And for the most part, kinda like I said, it's the developers that came in, even Shorecleft, you end up with at least sidewalk on one side of the street for the main streets. But, but even back then, so you're talking mid-sixties, the city didn't even require them to put in sidewalk on ninety percent of those streets. So Vicaro has sidewalk and some of the main streets like Cascadita up to the school. But most of those other streets in that community didn't, didn't even have sidewalk. Whereas the new subdivisions that come in, we've kinda taken that into consideration, and Broadmoor, oddly enough, developed around the same exact time as Shorecleft, you would think they would've required it on both of them. But, you know, somehow Shorecleft got out without having to do sidewalk. But Broadmoor had to do it, likely, or chose to do it, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Yes, uh, just a comment about historic sidewalks. In two thousand and six, city did a citywide historic, or, uh, total reassessment of our historic structures and did survey forms. And at that time, the recommendation of the consultant was to add historic tiles as a historic object, it's not a historic site. Um, or it's a historic site, sorry, historic site, um, versus a historic structure. So as you know, for a historic structure, if it is adjacent, say, to a property or within three hundred feet, some of those projects go before the planning commission if they're doing a new building. Whereas historic sidewalks, it's different. It's actually listed out in our ci- city's designated list of historic structures that, uh, a project next to a historic tile sidewalk isn't that alone, sub, make it subject to a public hearing. Um, it's, it's more for the purposes of, uh, documenting and preserving the resource. So if the city wanted to, uh, consider removing that as a historic, uh, site, then the city would need to do a new assessment of the resource, the, the condition of it, and, um, potentially do environmental review. Um, in the city council, removing the designation in, uh, for the city and the city's list of historic structures and, uh, sites. Uh, it is possible, but it's a process that would have to be initiated by the city council. Given it's a public improvement. Did you want to say?
Uh, just in case.
Okay.
I didn't know if you had any questions about the hodgepodge nature of the sidewalk, or even just that condition that we often go over. Um, I do have that code open if you wanna see it.
Where, the fifty thousand dollar?
Yeah.
I've seen it.
Yeah, so in general, it's, if it's something you wanna talk about, I, I can answer those.
I, 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 I'm, I mean, what's your feeling about the fact that it is a layer, many different styles? Does, what's the feedback you've gotten on that from the people who live there?
Similar to what Commissioner Davis said, I, I mean, he spoke as a resident at the counter, just, hey, I had to do one thing, but my neighbor had to do it different.
Yep.
Why did they have to do tile but not? Why did they have to do tile but not me or vice versa, I forget.
Confusing.
Yeah, and it was just not, you know, it's not known going in and they just feel like it's a surprise.
Yep.
And I do hear that it's similar, and that's why we had a great conversation with the counter, it was. It's similar to some of the stuff I do here, it's what can we do to fix this? And west of the five, actually, council um. Did say, you could choose as a homeowner anywhere west of the five to put in tile if you want to. You don't have to be in one of these black areas. And so sometimes if a historic house wanted to come in, the homeowner can choose to do so.
Yeah. I I don't know, I think there's a lot of value in consistency. Some people might like eclectic, oh, it's great, then it's all different, you know? So it's really obje- it's subjective. Uh, I think the question that I have is more related to, is this a problem that needs fixing? And if it is, how do we go about it? You know, if we wanted to. Uh, move towards a single standard, if we wanted to move to something that's. Less onerous on the homeowner, cost wise. And more explainable, consistency wise. Uh, if we wanted to have something that was low maintenance. And it, it means something versus, oh, you can do whatever you want, and then it, it isn't meaningful anymore. How would we go about doing that? Is that something that we would um? Ask the council for a work program to revisit our sta- our standards and our ordinances and try and clean it up? Uh, and then it's a go forward and, you know, going forward, we have a consistent. Set of rules and we think that they're more livable. Uh, that's, that's a question. I mean, I would keep going for just a minute. Because if I were to take a step back and say, well, if if we wanted to do something where with the sidewalk treatment. That's meaningful, I think that's a whole separate discussion regarding policy, right? Like where. I think we can have a discussion like, well, that should be maybe around the pier bowl and maybe. A one or two other places, but the rest of the time, no, we don't need that, right? So it's a conversation, maybe it's a design review conversation, but. I I think this could be greatly simplified. What I'm hearing is it's overly complicated. The results aren't are eclectic and they're mixed and it's confusing people. Uh, some people might like the chaos, other people are really don't like it. Um, and it does seem arbitrary, the city just says, well, you have to do this, but you don't. And people want fairness, they don't want this arbitrary. This rule makes no sense, why are you making me do this? I think there's value in cleaning that up. So if I were to answer my own question, is this a problem we're solving, I think it is. I just don't know if it's something that's, that is doable with. Us as a working group to kind of work through it and make recommendations to the council or what? But I don't know, what would you guys, how do you feel about, is this something we would want to put some time into, maybe? Looking at, having discussions and then putting together a recommendation?
Personally, I think it's pretty, it gets pretty complicated and it is in every city because every city has a lifetime. Um, you know, some cities were not. This city started out as sort of a city almost, like when it was developed. Most cities weren't, they were part of the county and you have the same problem because over time. Standards change from, I mean, the streets were dirt, then you had, then you. Had to have some kind of concrete, then later develops to, you had to have a curb. Then comes to, you had to have a sidewalk, so you see this whole progression. Because just to deal with the dark black lines, there's a lot of other problems in here. There's properties I can list off the top of my head that I've driven by that, you know, have apartment houses and there's not even enough parking. There are no sidewalks and the people use the street have their, and there's no real curb, it's just a bump. And the people can't even get their car, there's not even enough space for the car to fit. And I'm talking really like about Santa Bar, I think it's Santa Barbara, that those cars are just, you know, right there. You know, here, if you want to talk just about the tile issue, I think that's fine, but. Because you have a city that's lasted for a hundred years, even though it's been under its own control, the council has changed their building. And street design, you know, systems over the last one hundred years. And to try to correct it all takes another hundred years.
Oh, I don't think we can correct it. I think we could just.
It's just.
Have a clear set of rules that's consistent and reasonable and not onerous and random. That's it.
And I, I think the simplest would be is this replacements in the black areas could just be gray concrete if they want.
Yeah.
Because eventually, every house over a hundred years or a lot is going to be. And eventually you'd see the dark gone, except if it was really historical. I can see historical duck down to Main Street, I can't really see the historical significance of Cabrillo. First of all, not many people intentionally go down Cabrillo. It's not observed very much by anybody. My dentist happens to be there, but soon the dentist will be over at the old Tommy's restaurant. So I think there's also some inconsistencies, you know, in that. Did the city do at the backside of the library, did we do um, red tiles?
It was.
When they did that whole side.
Before, so the backside up against that white retaining wall was replaced with tile, so anything we touched in there. I believe was all done in tile.
We got paid to the nose.
Yep.
So, I mean, if I would say if we do come up with, you know, the simplest thing would be just a plan. Like El Camino Real, from here to here, it's interlocking pavers, from here to here, it's gray concrete. And then we just set that in stone, that way.
That's what I was referring to, yeah, something like that.
Replacing it, maybe it's something that, hey, you gotta be doing half your frontage at least before you create that old Tommy's look, right? Because I don't want to start, I I personally just hate that, what happened at Tommy's. If that was, you know, my business, I would have probably been mad to say I couldn't do red concrete there. Because it looked horrendous.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's still out there right now, actually. And so it's, if you're doing your whole frontage, the new, all three developments. It's all gray concrete, it's a nice, so creating a plan of just El Camino Real should be gray. With the exception of the two zones where it's interlocking paver. And then, you know, that's pretty easy.
Yeah.
The rest of the city should be great.
Yeah.
Except for, we do have these options west of the five where you can put in tile, not too, I don't know if I have one person who's gone, can I put in tile? Um, planning commission used to kind of require it on ne- ne- next year, I think. And council at some point said, timeout, uh, stop doing that because it's not in the code.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so, but now they, when they did that, they said, well, if people choose to. And then it wasn't just historic, they said, well, if anybody chooses to. But that just leads to more of a, you know, quilt pattern of what we got.
Hodgepodge of random stuff.
It's it's tough. And like Bart said, getting the red concrete, even if. Even if you're replacing your water lather and you gotta remove four feet, getting that red to match. So Robertson's got the mix, right? It's called San Clemente Red, so you, but even then, it still comes out a little different. And it's going to cure at different rates over different decades.
That was a mistake to do that.
Trying to do, I I mean. A batch of concrete for a couple panels to match, I mean, that's insane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It it's tough, and I think that's. The, the hodgepodge of the different reds led to council kind of saying, no more red on concrete. Or uh, on El Camino Real, excuse me. And but I don't know if they meant to do what happened at Tommy's where. It was just literally a checkerboard of different red and gray, that was.
Yeah.
Uh.
So Zach, what would you like to see out of tonight? Would you like to see something happen?
You know.
Can I comment?
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so I think that there's really, first of all, the planning commission can make a recommendation to the city council. So um, that's then your purview. And the city council would direct staff if they wish staff to spend time on this. But just to go back, there's the strategic implementation program. That outlines what city council's priorities are. For staff time that is not devoted to ongoing operations, which is. Ongoing operations, it consists of most of the staff time, right? So it is a finite resource. And uh, the city council is supposed to be considering. The SIP soon with the budget when it goes to them. Um, and so we update that every year. So that's the first thing I want to say is if if there's a recommendation, it would have to be, is this something? That should be in the SIP for the next five years, um, for the, for council to make. Um, a decision. Uh, next month, right? Because they're going to be considering the SIP for the next five years or. Is it something they should consider uh, the following update, next annual update? Um, so that's one thing to consider. Uh, as for like what that would mean, there's really. To me, there's two ways to go about this, there's more of like a near term potential. Way to handle it and then more of i- an established uh. Approach. So the first would be possibly the city council adopting a policy. Because sidewalks are in the public right away. Uh, that the city council adopt a policy with some sort of public process. That outlines what material should be used according to the municipal code. Um, and that that could be more of a short term fix. And then more of a long term fix might be. Clarifying everything in the design guidelines when the city's supposed to update the city design guidelines, so it's going to be a major project. Uh, so that, that's going to commit more staff time and that is to happen further out in the SIP. So that, that's the way I'm seeing it, if you wanted to address this issue sooner. Um, and then later more formally.
So I'm gonna, can I, can I ask Chris, I'm gonna ask Chris a question. Um, so council does right now have a sidewalk, adopted council approved sidewalk policy. It doesn't get into anything about types of sidewalk, but it gets into that fifty fifty program and how to, how we have the fifty thousand dollars and that trigger. That policy is in need of some update. And maybe there is a potential for there to kind of, when that policy is available to come forward. To, I believe you guys first and then council, maybe there's a chance to slip in. Hey, can we at least just make El Camino Real consistent? Can we at least just do a two basic item thing for consideration? I don't know if that would require uh, a s- any historic assessment, because there is tile on El Camino Real.
And. Yeah, it depends on if the city is interested in potentially. Uh, moving away from. Keeping tile as a designated historic site, right? To like have that municipal code requirement where if they have tile, they replace it in kind. That sort of standard in maintaining the tile. If the city wants to move away from that, that that is an effort. One kind of path to take. If if it's strictly just what material are we going to use when we replace. Uh, non ta- historic tile, like original tile. Then that's just putting something in the policy.
So then maybe that is something that, a short term, quick thing is, we want to clarify that El Camino Real should be standard gray. You know.
What's the municipal code saying now on sidewalks?
Uh, municipal code right now says, um, you shall put it in with its fifty thousand dollars and it shall meet city standards. And then in areas of the black shading, you shall do tile if it is tile. The wording of it is a little um, confusing because there's two different sections, I have the two codes back to back, but.
So the historic tile sidewalks, is that by ordinance or just by a resolution?
That is an ordinance that was updated that is in the code, you've. If you are tile, you have to replace it with tile and it shall be one of those two specific tiles.
So that must be in the municipal code then.
That's in our municipal code.
And you know, one option could be also in this city. Council adopted policy is to be more specific and say that if it's original. Historic tile, then it has to be replaced as tile. Versus just like tile that someone elected to put in, right? Like s- s- uh, Zach was saying that the city has had a policy that people can choose to put in tile. But maybe making it clear that that's not the same, that's not historic city tile that has to be replaced. So it could be a clarification.
Maybe we could just continue with another study session when, you know, member Davis is here, since he kind of brought it up. Just to.
Yeah, the only problem I see of what we've been talking about here about. You still can't replace and make a good match. On historic tile.
We we tried, we actually.
I know we tried.
We did an RFP, we we spent several months, I was actually heavily involved in that, spent a lot of time contacting. All the tile people throughout Western America and uh, we got one additional per tile. And I was told it's handmade each tile close to, you know.
Or put it on a future agenda if we want it with member Davis here and talk.
Yeah, I I I guess I think we're, I'd like to wrap it up, you know, and um. Give us a few minutes to take a break before we start our regular meeting, so. If there's any final comments anyone wants to make or, you know, I think right now, Zach, you're you're hearing that, you know, we've got. A mix of views, but. We see value in maybe trying to help support you in cleaning this up and make it more consistent and more. User friendly and so forth, so we're available to support you. When you're ready for that support, I guess.
What it sounds like too, if we are going to bring forward a sidewalk update, would it be something that, that's another good time for a.
Yeah, absolutely, and I.
Looks like we might do one anyway.
And and when you do do that, if if you really want to get. Real deep down in the weeds, bring it to design review first. So we can mull it over and and. Put the the commission here with some recommendations, yeah.
Because it's definitely within your purview, I believe.
I think so too, I think it should be addressed, but your, the staff time is certainly. Uh, commodity that we're not in control of and we don't want to control it, so we leave it, we leave it up to you guys.
Even getting a consistency of just, hey, the recognizing that a design guideline says. Red brick border.
Yeah.
The city engineer at the time said, hey, this is just popping up, it's creating trip hazards, what's, what's.
There's a lot of benefits to getting this fixed.
That we're not doing that, we're just simply following city standard for gray concrete.
Uh, question, question for Jonathan. Um, at what point um, do we need to get city councils? Authorization blessing to use staff time to pursue something like this? And would we be better off just going ahead and saying, it needs to be revised, do you guys? Agree that we need to pursue this and uh, um, get their blessing? Is that necessary?
There's a couple ways that that could be initiated. One is through uh, like a grant process where we would um, discuss, and this was mentioned briefly, like if there was an interest in doing. An evaluation of the historic resources or or where. Certain corridors might be appropriate to use that, et cetera, that that type of survey work, we'd we'd look at grant opportunities and so we always have to. Uh, uh, get the council's authorization to apply for those grants, so that would be uh, probably the most clean path to do that. Um, otherwise, uh, our long range planning um, work always has a a queue of things to be addressed and those. Periodically go before council for uh, their blessing. Uh, and so if the planning commission uh, wants to pursue this for further, that's something that we can. Uh, incorporate within that list and that's the council's opportunity to. Um, highlight things they want to prioritize uh, or remove things if they don't want staff to address those, so staff could. Uh, seek initiation in that way, those are the two most um, likely ways for that to kick off.
So if we have one more.
If we have one more together, um, that might be something we want to do before we. Get a true staff report. On it, but at least get it um. So it's in city council's eyes, knowing that it's something we're concerned about and. Um, let them bless it and we'll move on, figure it out. Is there anything else you need from us tonight, Zach? You you got the sense of what?
Yeah.
We're here, we we would like to help you update this, that's our.
Let me know if you want another study session.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis is here and we can do that too.
All right, very good. Do I, can I get some help with a motion to adjourn?
Chair.
Yeah.
Bring up a couple points.
Oh, sure.
One is if we're.
Are we talking about the golf course or are we a journey without it?
No, we're not even, the meeting's not even started. Yeah.
If we're gonna be making a recommendation to go to council, we probably need to do it in a regular planning commission meeting, not in a study session.
We're not making any recommendations.
No, I understand, but I'm saying, trying to do it at another study session and then we probably can't do it, I don't know, but.
No, it should be a regular, it should be uh, what you're saying, a PC, regular meeting item.
Right.
That makes sense.
Couple thoughts I have, I hadn't spit them out yet, um, I like Bart's and um. Dr. McCacken's ideas for consistency, I think, you know, just. I think, you know, just for consistency, I think gray concrete, it doesn't seem.
Yeah.
Yes, it's historic, but I mean, we've got much heavier cars crossing over those driveway approaches now. They're all beat up.
There's other ways of designating something.
Right.
Need to do the red tile. You can do etchings, you can do lots of sign, you can do lots of stuff.
Exactly. So that's something, you know, my thoughts. Um, I wonder about the appropriateness of, of asking for all new concrete um with the fifty thousand dollar remodel, if that's like too much. I wonder when the fifty thousand was established, should that be a hundred thousand now? I don't know. That's.
Okay.
And I move to adjourn this study session.
To, okay, to Wednesday, June the fifth. I think that's what you meant, twenty twenty four.
Study session on June the fifth?
Well, that's just when we do it, right, Jonathan? We're just gonna move, we're adjourned to then, right?
Correct, yes. And then if ever that is canceled, that notice goes out.
Cancel it if there's no materials. All right, been seconded by uh Chair Pro Tem McCacken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, okay. Study session is adjourned. For people in the audience, we're gonna take like a five minute timeout. I will call to order the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente for Wednesday, May twenty second, twenty twenty four. We're starting a little late, six fifteen due to our study session convened here at city hall. Tonight for the roll call, we have, we are missing Commissioner Davis and Vice Chair Camp. All other commissioners are present and our uh Chair Pro Tem McCacken was gonna lead us in the pledge tonight.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the essence of all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, our agenda. Item four is a special order of business or presentations and there are none tonight. That takes us to number five, which is the minutes from our meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty four. I wanna call to the commission's attention, we did get a revised set of minutes. I think they might be uh in front of everybody. Just so if there were a couple of minor changes. Everyone, uh, anyone have any comments that they wanna make on the minutes? Well, the minor changes were uh, hate to do it, I don't wanna embarrass anyone, but. They, well, it just had to do with names.
Ah, okay, thank you.
When it was the wrong commissioner was named and I just had him change it to the right one. Like someone else can be in the meeting besides me. I'm like, no, that's a mistake, that kinda thing. Yeah. Otherwise, no changes, the, everything's the same.
Okay, I'll, I'll move if we adopt the uh minutes of regular meeting of the planning commission, May eighth, twenty twenty four. Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Corandal, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's a second by uh Chair Pro Tem McCacken. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, that motion carries. Oral communications is number, item number six on the agenda. It's the portion of our agenda that we allow any member of the public to address the commission on any non-agenda item. Do we have any? I don't have any blue cards, but does anyone in the audience wanna speak to, on a non-agenda item tonight? Nobody stepping forward, so that takes us to item seven. That's the consent calendar. We do have one item on there, which is the general plan consistency finding for the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six for the capital improvement program. And that's just a request by the staff for the planning commission to find that the capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan. I know we have staff here to answer questions. Does anyone want to pull the item from consent and talk about it? From the Chair Pro Tem McCacken and it's been seconded by Commissioner Prescott Loffler. Any discussion about that? We all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much, my pleasure. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for, this was well done, good document.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's very good.
Also, the planning staff, including uh Chris Wright, was very helpful in this process to me.
Mr. Wright's always helpful.
Always.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Uh, item eight is our section of our agenda where we conduct public hearings. We have an item on here which is recommended by staff to be continued. Uh, so it's for the project twenty three zero eight three, the Sea Clift Hotel and Restaurant at four oh one Pasadena Court. And the staff is recommending that we can, we continue that. So I don't.
Question on that?
Yes, of course.
Staff is, according to this, recommended till June fifth. How much confidence do we have in that date?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um, we, this continuance was requested by the applicant. Uh, they were not available to be present at this meeting. Uh, and uh a portion of the elements that were uh pending uh for staff have been completed since the prior continuances, including the water quality management plan. That's the, the big one. Uh, so we do expect this to be heard at June fifth. Related to that, uh, while not required, since we did have continued this to date certain, we are renoticing, so we're resending envelopes uh related to that date and reposting the site uh just to uh affirm and, and, and make sure that we're uh taking that extra step to alert uh the interested parties. We also have an existing interested parties list, so they will uh receive electronic notifications. That would include, for instance, uh, anyone that's renting uh because the, the city's standard notification policy goes to property owners within three hundred feet. So anyone who uh might rent nearby and has been interested and, and has interacted with our staff on this will be notified electronically as well.
That's good. There's gonna be a lot of interest in this project, I think. Okay.
I move we continue this item till um the planning commission meeting of June fifth.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made. And we have been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is new business and that is item A. And it's an interpretation of a caretaker's unit on the Shore Cliffs Golf Course and it's a request to interpret the golf course caretaker unit is uh to see if it's allowed within the sector G coastal zone section of the Forester Ranch specific plan. And so to present this item tonight, we have Christopher Wright. Good evening, Christopher.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. The applicant has requested to postpone any decision on this item. So staff is recommending to table it to a date uncertain, to allow staff to work with the applicant on change to, potential change to the way that they may wish the Planning Commission to interpret the specific plan.
Okay. Sir, you came to speak on this item?
No, I just can concur with Christopher.
That's it, you're good. Okay, so you don't need to speak to this item then. All right. Okay, did anyone have, want to ask any questions of Christopher, make any comments before we do a motion? Mr. Crandall, you look like you have something on your mind.
I just wanted to compliment Chris on his evaluation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have the staff information to table this to a date uncertain. Someone want to move that? I'll move that. I'll move that we table this to a date uncertain. And yeah, that'll be the motion.
Second.
Second by Chair Pro-Tam McCacken. All those, any discussion before we vote? We'll vote, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous. Good to see you, Christopher.
See you, thank you.
Thank you for a good staff report. It was helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, old business is item 10. We don't have any, and that takes us to item 11, which is reports of commissioners and staff. Do we have any commission reports before we ask Mr. Lightfoot to update us on various items? None? None? Okay. Jonathan?
Thank you, Chair. I do have a few updates. The first is just a follow-up on an email that I had sent to the commission that we do have a few terms expiring soon. Those would be for Commissioner Cosgrove, Commissioner McCann, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler, and Commissioner McCacken. And so if interested in continuing on, you would need to reapply by next Friday via the link that's available on the city website and through the email that was distributed by the city clerk. My email also included that link. Those applications again are due May 31 by 5:00 p.m. And interviews for both Planning Commission and some other commissions and committees will all be held on June 18 at 1:00 p.m. So I just wanted to reiterate that point. The next is that the commission voted on an item last meeting that has since been appealed, so just providing notice of that. That's the Moses Residence on Avenue de La Cuesta. Appeals per code are required to be heard within 60 days. That's handled as a de novo hearing, meaning the applicant for the project is still the applicant, so it wouldn't be the appellant that is putting forward specific information. They will have an attachment to the report where they outline items that they are requesting council to consider. So that will be heard at the intent, is at the second meeting in June. So unless either the applicant or appellant requests a continuation beyond that, that's the expected date for that item to be heard. The third item I have, well, before I move on, are any questions on either of those first two things?
I just want to mention, I did reapply online this evening.
Oh, great.
Or this afternoon. I will not be in town, I'm out of town on June 18.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about the appeals process generally?
I guess not.
Okay. The third item is just a general update on the local coastal plan and where we are with that. The staff has not had a significant amount of time to devote towards that project recently. We, you may recall, requested authorization to apply for a grant through the California Coastal Commission. It was a rolling grant. We'd been working closely with their staff and had support of their staff on that item. And before the item could be heard on the commission's agenda, the governor's office put a freeze on the spending out of that line item of the budget. And so we were, we followed up with commission staff though, and they recommended that the city essentially provide the same application package, but redirect it towards the SB1 Ocean Protection Council grant. And the scope of that grant allows for very, very similar style work. So we have on the June 18 agenda for council, just to pivot to request authorization to submit for that grant at the same level. So that was a one and a half million dollar request. And similarly with the OPC grant, there's not a matching requirement. There will be some level of matching staff, time, and resources that would go into that, but there's not a direct general plan financial contribution. So that'll go before council on the 18th and then move forward with the state agency from there. And then broadly, just reminding that the request within that one and a half million dollars is a split amongst a variety of things. A component of that is going to be related to ongoing site search and selection of sand sources that we'd like to incorporate into the LCP consideration to streamline future procurement of sand. And then another component of that would be to augment our existing staff. So what we have, how we had framed that was to replace or provide a replacement lead project planner valuation, so that Christopher in particular could continue and focus on that work, but that we could backfill all the different things that he's doing for us outside of the LCP while that happens. And then finally, not finally, but the other significant portion of that would take a look at geotechnical issues. We've continued to have some ambiguity in applications that come in on coastal canyons or bluffs regarding the geotechnical standards that are within the LUP. So the LUP is not intended to be a function like a zoning code that sets definitive standards, but there are some definitive standards in there, and there's some ambiguity on how to best handle those. So we think that some additional geotechnical clarity would be very helpful in IP. And then finally, parking. The city's LUP, the Land Use Plan in the Coastal Zone recommends, or has a policy. So the city's policy says we will consider alternatives to vehicular parking in some cases, as one example. But then there's no direct trade-off. So we're looking at doing a parking study to, A, update what's the current existing lay of the land as far as parking goes. We haven't done a study since 2018 on that, so that would be one component. B, what are best practices out there and what would we be comfortable considering for some of those trade-offs? Could you replace up to one or two stalls? And in doing that, do you, like, what are the options there? Like, would we consider bike parking as a portion of trade-off, et cetera? So it'll explore that. And then finally, it would explore a potential in Lufi, where right now our code provides an avenue for shared parking or waivers of parking. And in Lufi would be another, and more concrete option, that would also provide clarity. Because currently, if the city is authorizing waivers or alternate means of satisfying parking, typically the Coastal Commission is then following up with conditions that do require some form of fee anyways. So again, it would provide more clarity upfront. So those are a few things that would be addressed within that grant. Any questions on the LCP?
Yeah, I just want to, I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make it a question. When that's submitted, the process is the planning, the Coastal Commission will then review it. If they approve it, what do we get in return? Are we then granted permitting authority within the coastal zone? And then we would have, we would be the sole permitting authority, and those applications in the coastal zone would no longer need Coastal Commission review and approval?
Yeah, good question. So there's two pieces to an LCP. LCP is Local Coastal Program, and we have one piece done. That's the Land Use Plan. The other part is the Implementation Plan. That's not done. It's been drafted, and we previously circulated for comments, and we received a number of significant comments from coastal staff, some of which the city was not comfortable with accepting directly. So there's some ongoing work in that space. If we get to a point where the IP is certified by both the commission and the council, then yes. From that point forward, coastal development permits would be issued by the city. That's something that does already occur in Dana Point and other cities. However, within that program, typically, the Coastal Commission will also identify areas that they have appeal authority for. And it's not uncommon for the Coastal Commission to appeal projects if there's any controversy to them. So some of the projects that you see that we get public concern about, there's a good chance that they still will have to get an independent review from the commission if that's appealed.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things. One, we need the Implementation Plan approved as well, and that seems to be not on a work currently, on a work program right now. It's a sort of in abeyance, it sounds like.
Correct. We have a redline document that we're working on.
Okay.
One, one piece of that, for instance, is there's ongoing discussion statewide about the definition of existing development when it comes to development in the coastal zone, and there's a couple of lawsuits related to that. And in one case, the ruling was contrary to the commission, but they're appealing that ruling. So that's been a significant touch or issue with the city of San Clemente as well. And so there is some interest in having resolution to those suits before we move forward, because that might put us in a better position to more clearly define those terms.
But things that are not controversial, we would be the permitting authority, and that would, that would be a benefit to the community because they would not have the time penalty of having to wait for Coastal Commission calendar.
Absolutely.
Okay. One of the, one of the sensitive areas that's been getting a lot of press is the coastal bluffs and a lot of investment by OCTA just to, you know, stabilize it for the tracks. Residents have also stepped forward and said, hey, it's sliding under my home. Can we, can we reinforce it? Is that the kind of thing, today that goes to coastal? If we get our plan approved, would that be something that the city could approve for residents that want to reinforce? Casons are otherwise there on the coastal bluff, their hill?
Yes, and yet the bluffs are likely going to be one of those areas that's within the appeal, the appeal authority of the commission. And the city obviously won't be able to guarantee whether or not the commission appeals decisions in those areas.
Gotcha. Okay. I think, go ahead, Commissioner Crandall.
A quick update on the Miramar.
Sure.
I've seen the newspaper articles and whatnot, but...
Yeah, so I became aware of the potential transaction at the same time as the public. And so I did contact the contractor. There's no intent for any work to cease at the property. So their timeline for the bowling alley is August is what they're targeting. The interior framing is completed. The, my personal perspective on that is that there likely is not going to be any change in the, you know, expected outcome of what occurs there. There's master leases in place at both facilities now. So I think that the transition in ownership is more of a matter of who holds the underlying property rights more so than what will the daily operations look like at either of those properties.
Thank you.
Final couple items, just as far as projects of interest. The first is there is a residential development that has, the project is referred to as the Bluffs at Boca. That's been inactive for the past six months. They are looking to resubmit. That's a project that involved a city stub right-of-way that's on a bluff area in South San Clemente. And the project would involve, I believe, in the range of seven residential units. And so there are some alterations being made to that project, but there is an intent to resubmit. So you might hear some questions from the public about that. There is not a resubmittal in yet. Once there is, as always, anyone from the public is welcome to come in and inspect those documents. We cannot provide copies of architectural drawings that are under review. Those are copyright protected. But anyone is welcome to come in and review for any project over the counter or at our kiosk when projects of interest come up. The other is we are looking to likely schedule the Hotel San Clemente for Planning Commission consideration within, by the end of July. So there's, it would either be the second meeting in June or the only meeting in July for that item. So those are a couple of things that are moving forward. And then finally, I will be out of office next week. So if you have any questions, Zach is going to be serving as the de facto city planner. In my absence, Adam will be here as well. So Adam will be sitting for me, though, for a design review subcommittee on Wednesday. But just wanted to alert you all that I will be away from my desk.
Okay, thank you. I see Commissioner Prescott Loeffler has her mic turned on.
Hi, can we go back to the Miramar, please?
Sure.
Okay, so we said August. Does the city have an actual construction schedule?
We don't have a construction schedule, no.
Can you ask to get one so that you could see the dailies, to see what has been finished, what is about to be finished, what is future to be finished? And does the city, is the city able to hold the owner to that schedule?
I can certainly request one. But as far as can we hold the owner to that schedule, not really, unless there is an expiration of their building permit. And if there is an expiration of the building permit, especially in this case where it's a historic property, we have a section of code regarding demolition by neglect that could come into play where we have bigger tool chest to use in that case. But it wouldn't really kick in until there was that expiration of a building permit that we would be able to leverage, something like that. But I certainly can request, and I will say that the contractor has been very responsive. So I will ask for that and share any information that I get.
And then has any leases been offered and accepted by business to accommodate the bowling alley area?
Yeah, they, there are existing leases in place for both, for the bowling alley. I believe that there is also a lease in place now for the theater portion. They've been working with Wedgewood Weddings at that location. For the bowling alley, it's a variety of smaller food and beverage vendors. The one local vendor that people would recognize is Zebra House Coffee. But yes, there are, there are lease agreements signed for that space.
And does the city have any, I would say, let me see, how would I word this? Any responsibility if those leases are not met or the construction is delayed or anything like that?
The city doesn't. That would be a civil matter between those parties.
Commissioner McCann?
Jonathan, just curious if you could give us an unofficial update on the sand replenishment project?
Sure. So the city manager made a trip up to Sacramento about a month ago to address this topic. And he talked through a presentation really highlighting sand, not just as an amenity, but as, you know, a infrastructure element, and was able to use photos of the project that occurred after our initial stage. So the city started to pull sand, and it wasn't fine sand as we were expecting. They moved on to North County San Diego. So he used images from that project after it was completed that really helped tell that story. When you, when you look at the images, you know, the properties on the bluff, you know, you imagine falling off next year. And in the before picture, and then in the after picture, you really have a sense of no concern for those properties. And so it really told a good story that, you know, sand serves a very important infrastructure buffer function. And so, fast forwarding though, we have a contracted staff person, Leslia. She also is assisting us with the LCP, the planning efforts there. But she led the transition in finding an alternate site for sand, so that's ongoing. They are going to break that up, though, into two segments, because they wouldn't have been able to complete the full sand drop before July. sand drop before July 4. And so, there were discussions, and they landed it, an agreement to break that up, where they would do part one now in return and do part two in the late fall. What I heard, I believe, was the October-November timeframe, so after kind of the summer season has concluded. And my understanding is that they'll withdraw all the equipment, so there will still be some impacts during June on the beach for certain areas where, you know, there's heavy equipment and, and areas that you don't, you won't be able to lay your towel down. But by July 4, the full beaches should be open for the remainder of the summer, and then, again, there'll be some impacts, but kind of after the main summer rush has occurred.
Are we happy with, you know, the second effort, all the sand that's coming up, the quality, the size, the volume? Are we happy with all that?
Yeah, everything I've heard has been very positive about the quality of sand, and so I think we're going to continue to pull from there as long as we can. But again, that's a piece of, the next grant, too, is proactively looking at identifying other sites. I think the issue with the cobble is that the process to, from initiation to beginning the project was 20 years, and, and so it's been a long time since they were at, out at that site in Oceanside, and, and the sub-ocean landscape changed to some level. And there may still be good quality sand there, but it might be underneath, you know, a thick enough layer of the cobble that it just wasn't worth using that site anymore. So hopefully, we, now that we've been through this process and kind of have the underlying federal and state support, that there won't be such a gap between identifying the site and actually pulling it onto the beach.
Thank you.
Those are all great updates, Jonathan. Thank you for the time to do that tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commission.
Yeah. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Did you have any last comments there? Okay. All right, so it looks like our next meeting will be June 5? Someone want to help us?
I move approval to continue, or to adjourn this meeting and reconvene on June 5.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner McCann, seconded by...
I'll second that.
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler. All those in favor of adjourning to June 5?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.